Good evening. Welcome to the April 30th Workshop of the City Council, which is actually a budget workshop.
Recording in progress.
Ms. Raul, please take role.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Joyce. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Weiss. Councilmember Figueroa.
Present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Ready again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and call the one council item. At the end, we also have an opportunity for public to speak on items not on the agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and begin with subsection one, which is 2025-2026 General Fund Overview. We have a report by Jill Moya, our Financial Services Director. Ms. Moya?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Jill Moya, Financial Services Director, and I'm here tonight for the City of Oceanside's I will start off this workshop with an overview of the city's general fund proposed operating budget. Next, Michael Gossman, our Assistant City Manager, will present the proposed Measure X budget. He will be followed by John McCalvey, Principal Management Analyst and Water, who will present the Water Utilities' proposed operating budget. Next, Brian Thomas, our City Engineer, and Mabel Ueda, our Principal Water Engineer, will present the capital improvement budget. And Joe Ravitch, our Harbor Division Manager, will conclude with the Harbor proposed budget. So the first item on tonight's agenda is the general fund proposed operating budget. Tonight, as with previous years, we are presenting a balanced budget where expenses are less than revenue and reserves or one-time monies are not used to cover ongoing costs. This proposed budget meets all reserve obligations, such as the city's Healthy City and Economic Stabilization Reserves and Pension Reserves. This is a high-level look at the proposed fiscal year 25-26 general fund budget. Total revenues are $230.93 million; expenses are $227.65 million, which would result in a surplus of $3.28 million. These proposed amounts would maintain our current service levels. We are recommending to add $1.93 million of ongoing expenses. With these additions, our projected surplus would be $1.35 million. We also recommend adding one-time additions of $2.03 million. Of the proposed $230.93 million of revenues, three of the main revenue categories are property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax, or TOT. Property tax revenue is projected to increase due to increases in assessed values from new development and improvements throughout the city. Sales tax is projected to increase based on actual revenue received in the prior year. And TOT revenues are projected to slightly increase due to increased average daily rate city-watt. This graph shows how the revenue has been trending over the last eight years. Property tax is blue, sales tax is red, and TOT is green. Here is a breakdown by expenditure category of the current year's adopted budget compared to the proposed fiscal year 25-26 budget. The personnel expenditures include all negotiated salary increases and placeholders for bargaining groups, as well as pension cost increases calculated by the CalPERS Actuarial Report. The maintenance and operational expenditures are based on current year's budget with a CPI increase of 3%. So we are recommending the additions of about $2.03 million for one-time items and $1.93 million of ongoing items, for a total of $3.96 million of proposed additions. The proposed ongoing additions include operating budgets for the Coastal Zone Administration, Homeless Services, and Emergency Management Programs, as well as the implementation of the Climate Action Plan. Additionally, we are recommending adding one fire battalion chief and funding a portion of the housing personnel costs due to decreases in admin funds available from other revenue For the library, we recommend increasing funding for books and materials, as well as adding a second recreation supervisor to focus on senior services in parks and recreation. We also recommend an increase to help support special events in the parks and recreation park. For the police department, we are recommending increases due to increased costs for body worn cameras and other software, as well as funding for additional cameras in city parks to help deter vandalism and crime. For the Public Works Department, we recommend adding two new positions, an admin secretary and a city arborist. The total recommended ongoing costs are about $1.9 million. We are recommending the addition of funding for the following one-time costs: two code enforcement vehicles, funding for as-needed permit technician services, a command vehicle for the additional fire battalion chief, funding for a portion of housing personnel costs due to decreases in admin funds available from other revenue sources, and maintenance costs for the navigation center. For parks and recreation, we recommend adding funding for youth scholarships and equipment for the pools. For the police department, we recommend adding funding to install fast electric vehicle charging stations and overtime to staff the drone as a first responder and real-time crime center pilot programs. For Public Works, we recommend adding budget for repairs at city parks due to vandalism and repairs at the Oceanside Transit Center. The total recommended one-time costs are about $2 million. This is a summary of the new positions recommended for the next fiscal year. I've already covered the positions that will be funded by the general fund. For the non-general fund recommended positions, they include a professional assistant in the Human Resources Department and a water superintendent and assistant water utilities director for the water department. That concludes the general fund operating portion of this presentation. I will now turn this presentation over to Michael Gossman, our Assistant City Manager, to go over the proposed Measure X budget.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, members of the council. As Jill mentioned, I'm going to go over the proposed fiscal year 25-26 Measure X budget with a real focus on the changes that we will be making to the next-year spending plan versus prior year. As you know, the Measure X has a citizens oversight committee that's scheduled to meet on May 8th following the workshop. So once we get direction from you, we go to them. They say, does this fit within the spirit of Measure X? And then we come back to you in June with the budget hearing and budget adoption. So the Year Seven plan, spending plan, continues to provide for improved public safety, homelessness services, and investments in capital infrastructure. It includes about $17.4 million in expenditures, roughly $12 million of that going to improve public safety services, including addressing homelessness, $4 million to improved infrastructure, and $1.5 million to beaches, beachfront, pier, and parks. This is a list, I won't read them all to you, of our ongoing Measure X programs. They continue to be very effective and a real asset to the community. As you know, Measure X was renewed for another 10 years, and we look forward to continuing these programs and expanding and changing as needs and priorities and funding availability changes. So I want to talk about the four projects/programs that we're recommending adding to Year Seven. So the first is a Teens Works program in the library. This program has existed historically, but it was funded by grants. Those grants are no longer available to us, but we feel that it is a valuable program to the community, and we'd like to continue to fund those internships with Measure X dollars for $45,000 per year ongoing. Another large line item is for Navigation Center operations. As you know, staff was directed to put out a request for proposals for an operator for the Navigation Center. It is possible and anticipated that there will be some city cost share for this new operator. Since Measure X was predicated on the need to help with homelessness, we thought this was a good funding match. It could be less than $1.25 million. We don't know because we don't have those proposals back yet, but once we do and we've selected a provider and we've contracted with that provider, we'll know how much. If it's less than that, that will go back into Measure X for other Measure X programs and projects. But we wanted to be prudent and include the amount that we felt we would need to continue that really important asset that we have at the Navigation Center. Another new program, this is one-time funding, seed funding to create a fire hand crew that is out of the fire department. It would be a crew of workers that would be led by a fire department captain, an existing captain. This would not mean additional personnel. And they would lead that crew in going out and reducing fire risk in really high fire zones. That is one-time funding because the chief is very confident that he can get that funded through other sources on a going-forward basis, but we need this funding to get it off the ground. So that's just for the next year. And then lastly is shoreline restoration. I mentioned that Measure X was renewed for another 10 years. Part of that new ballot measure was the addition of beach and shoreline restoration to the language to reflect that and honor that. We put $500,000 a year into next year's budget, and that is anticipated to increase 10% per year after that. So that's a pretty healthy escalator, but this is a $500,000 gets us started. We also, unlike a lot of our budgets, we look forward for the full scope of Measure X, which now stands at 17 years. It was seven years, and now we're going another 10 years. The long and short of this is that we plug in all the programs that we want to continue to provide. We plug in projects that we think are needed and would fit within the Measure X mission. And then we forecast out what the revenues are going to be, what the expenditures are going to be, to make sure that we have enough in Measure X to cover that. And right now, we anticipate having roughly $500,000 at the end of Measure X to the good. So that would be have enough money to cover the programs and projects that we have for it. That's all I have, and now I'll hand it over to Mr. John McCalvey to give you an overview of the Water Utilities Department operating budget. Thank you, John.
John McCalvey, Principal Management Analyst, am here to present our proposed operating budget for the Water Utility. So our budget was put together with the following priorities: maintaining our infrastructure, sustainability, evaluating green or energy-efficient options when possible or feasible, and implementing the various mandates that we are under. For the Water budget, our assumptions are that we're going to be pretty stable compared to this year. There will be a slight increase in energy and chemical costs that we anticipate. We are assuming the increased purchase of water due to the closure of the Mission Basin facility approximately early 2026. Ms. Ueda will talk about that a little bit in our Capitol presentation. As Jill mentioned, we have two positions we're requesting. First is an Assistant Water Utilities Director that's split between the three utilities that we have. The other is a Water Treatment Superintendent, which is exclusively funded by Water. And all of this is predicated on our existing rate structure that we've presented to council and will be bringing early summer for the next rate increase. This is a quick look at our budget. We have no reserves anticipated this year, which is good news. No use of reserves. On the Sewerside, we're anticipating about a 5% increase due to personnel, energy, and chemical costs going up. I mentioned the Assistant Water Director, and we are within our predicated assumed rate structure, which we presented 6% in water, 4% in sewer. This is a look at our budget, our revenues, our expenditures. You'll note that we're anticipating a surplus, which is good. It goes to fund balance, helps mitigate any rate increases that we have to present. On the solid waste recycling, what I'll point out is that we are anticipating fewer expenditures and slightly greater revenues. And that concludes our presentation on the Water Utilities budget for '25-26. And now I'm going to turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'd like to present the fiscal year '25-26 General Capital Improvement Project budget for consideration. The estimated combined general and Water Utilities Capital Improvement Program budget is just over $211 million. The funding sources for this estimated $211 million is comprised of sales tax, enterprise funds, developer impact fees, general funds, and grants. Sales tax funding sources include Transnet, SB1, and Measure X, while developer impact fees include thoroughfare, thoroughfare and signals, citywide drainage, parks, and municipal buildings. The general fund accounts for the miscellaneous city projects, while enterprise funds are dedicated to water, sewer, and harbor projects. As a note, I'd like to remind everybody, enterprise funds cannot be used for anything other than projects dedicated to water, sewer, and harbor. This is a pie chart that shows how the $211 million is broken out. Enterprise funds make up almost $84 million of the total budget request, while the general fund makes up just over $33 million. Sales tax funds makes up over $51 million in request. Impact fees contribute over $36 million, while grants contribute $6 million to the pie chart. As noted on the slide, this year's projects are mostly carryforward projects or annual projects. We will talk about new projects in future slides. Impact fees are collected to offset costs of impacts to the city's infrastructure due to development. As a result of new state legislation and higher-than-anticipated construction costs and interest rates, collection of impact fees has been on the decline. The latest legislation further hampers the city's ability to collect impact fees in a timely manner and removes the city's discretion in determining when and if to defer impact fees with respect to residential development. As noted on the slide, the impact fees comprise roughly 30% of the revenue needed for new projects, but the balance to come from general fund allocations. And as development projects decrease, the available amount of impact fees also decreases. This slide, the Transnet, shows some of our annual, our new, and our future projects, which are in various stages of design or construction. As noted, some of these projects have multiple funding sources, including SB1 and Measure For the gas tax SB1, we are in a similar position with new and existing and future projects in various stages of design. Again, a number of these projects are funded through multiple accounts, through Transnet and Measure X. The pavement management program, we currently are looking around $3.1 million for slurry-seal projects funded through Measure X, SB1, and Transnet. The slurry-seal projects will cover the city's obligations to spend 30% or more on maintenance-related work under Transnet and SB1 requirements. The overlay portion of the project, we are proposing $10.35 million in funding through Transnet, SB1, and Measure X. Staff is proposing to focus this fiscal year's overlay endeavors on improving arterial roadways and collector roadways. We are currently in review of the pavement management program and are expected to bring the updated program to City Council later this calendar year. This slide highlights our citywide drainage project. A major project of note is the Cleveland Storm Drain Project, which will be combined with contributions from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds to cover the cost of water and sewer line installation in conjunction with the storm drain project. Currently, we are working with the Coastal Commission to finalize the permitting requirements. This is our parks slide, highlights the existing projects. Again, we have some projects funded through both parks and Measure X currently. This slide highlights the harbor projects, again, another enterprise fund, which our harbor manager will talk about a little bit later in the program tonight. Municipal buildings are another impact fee. These projects are funded by impact fees supplemented by general fund. These include design of Fire Station 8 and a few other city buildings that we're currently working on. Miscellaneous city capital projects, this one is funded solely by general funds as available. One of the highlights we want to point out is Park Site 1 for El Corazon, moving forward to getting that project underway. I also like to point out that we have added additional work for Fireside Park and some public park facility needs assessment studies, as well as John Landis lighting and construction. Under grants, these are in various stages of planning, design, or construction. And these, again, are funded solely by local, state, or federal grant projects. Thoroughfare and signals is another impact fee. This one is dedicated solely to the improvement of College Boulevard between Old Grove and Vista Way. We also have some other projects that deal with adaptive signals, as well as Coast Highway Corridor. Measure X, Michael has already talked about the projects under Measure X. And there are currently 48 unfunded projects for the future CIP that have been included with the memo and the staff report. At this time, I'd like to turn over to Mabel.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening. I'm Mabel Ueda, Principal Water Engineer. I will be presenting the proposed capital improvement program budget for the Water Utilities Department. Expenditures are funded by four primary funds, two from water, two from sewer, each having a fund to replace existing aging infrastructure and another to increase capacity on the infrastructure to accommodate growth and new development. Total expenditures for both the water and sewer capital projects is approximately $78 million for the next fiscal year. This anticipates construction starting on several major capital projects, including the La Salina decommissioning that requires sewer projects to be completed, as well as submission basin groundwater purification facility. The following are planned water and recycle water projects. These are generally projects that you've seen already that we are carrying forward. This includes submission basin groundwater purification facility, which, when that is going to go to construction later this year, we will need to purchase treated water from the Water Authority to offset that demand, which is roughly about 11% of the city's water The following is the project cost of water and recycle water projects completed last year and plan to be completed over the next five years for a total capital cost of $142 We continue to aggressively seek funding opportunities to fund our projects and offset the costs to our ratepayers. The water and recycle water projects will meet the following strategic goals: to provide a safe, reliable, drought-tolerant water supply for our community. The following are sewer capital projects. These are, again, generally the same that are carried forward with a major improvement is the sewer centralization components that will need to be completed prior to decommissioning the La Salina wastewater treatment plant. The following is the project status on some of our projects, along with the next five years' projected capital projects for spending of approximately $309 million. Similar to our water projects, we aggressively seek funding opportunities, and this shows grants that we have been awarded, as well as financing and grants that we are currently in pursuit of. These planned capital improvement projects meet our strategic goals to centralize our wastewater flows in order to increase source water, to increase our water reuse, as well as replacing aging infrastructure for system reliability and redundancy. With that, I will pass that on to Harbor.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to present the proposal for the Harbor budget for the fiscal year '25-26. I'm going to, as a brief overview, I'll start with revenue and then move on to expenditures, CIP, and finally, recommendation from state. For the proposed income revenue, we project $6.7 million in slip rental, $1.928 million in harbor facility leases, so the shops and restaurants around the harbor will contribute that amount, $1,105,600 in parking, $269,200 in fees, including waitlist, transfer, and management fees. Inspections and miscellaneous will bring us in approximately $39,000 in investment income, approximately $76,000. In terms of expenditures, we've set aside $3.6 million approximately for maintenance, that's ongoing operations. In terms of the MSU or Marine Safety Unit, just a touch over $3 million. Harbor Beach Lifeguard, $325,816. Administration, $1,425,080. The tied lease, $840,000. Property management, $38,110. Debt services, about $28,000. Depreciation, about $538,000. And a miscellaneous, $100,000. Depreciation, about $538,000, and a miscellaneous $156,000. And so the breakdown looks like this. As a budget, as a balanced budget, total revenue for fiscal year 2526 is projected to be $10,118,727. Our proposed expenses are $9,959,798 for a surplus to go to harbor reserves in an amount Moving on to the CIP and the existing projects, we have the Jolly Roger Dock Replacement continuing with a city match carried forward. The NG project, S Dock and R Dock are also carried forward. We're going to be replacing those two docks in full, and we're going to be using our own crew to do so. So we'll be saving a lot of money in doing that. We have a one-time use of reserves at $234,298 for the NG debt service. For the new CIP projects, we need to replace the Coast Guard ramp, which has met its lifespan. That'll cost approximately $30,000. Lot 1, our largest parking lot in the harbor, needs approximately $300,000 worth of repair. Lot 4 needs $100,000 set aside for repair. The fish scale or fish weighing station replacement is set aside $50,000. And for the bones of the iconic Oceanside sign, do all need to be replaced? They're wood and they're termite-ridden. Nothing is going to change with the sign, but what you don't see of it, so that's $40,000. Total of $520,000 in new projects. We've closed out the following projects: the harbor Lot 10, the harbor fishing pier, brow replacement at Coast Guard. We've replaced two roofs. We've repaired pavement in Lot 11 as well, and we're closing out the submeter installation project. Finally, staff recommends that the City Council direct staff to return on June 4, 2025 for final budget adoption and include all recommendations outlined in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2526.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do, we are going to hear from the public now. We have 28 speakers plus one organized presentation.
Correct, across all agenda items.
Yes, we're going to hear on all of the items that you've just heard the presentation on. So I'd like to ask you to go ahead and cut down your time to two minutes each, two minutes each, except for the organized presentation, which of course will be 10 minutes. So did you, did the organized presentation want to go first?
If that's your direction, if they're ready, yeah. I believe they have a video too, so we may need to go grab our IT help for that, pull up the video, if that's correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we're going to get that. Also, the way the agenda was set up was that speakers could sign up for each individual presentation. So if anyone was a duplicate, just remove them? Or how do we want to handle that?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind if you sign up for multiple
It's one item.
Agenda items, condense your discussion down to one item. Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Except for the group presentation, which will have the allotted 10 minutes.
Okay, so is the 10-minute presentation ready, or did you want us to start?
Yeah, I'm good to go.
Okay.
Okay, great, thanks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and city staff. I'm Charlie Bowen, and I run communications for Save Oceanside Sand. First off, I'd like to thank our city staff for their work on the budget and for meeting with us to discuss it. And next, I'm going to play a video. And keep in mind that this is a, it's a beta test. This is only the third time that we've shown it in public. It's not a finished product, but we thought it was good for the community and for council to see it tonight as it should properly be presented on a device.
Your left, the little triangle to the side? Oh, they're on full screen.
And I just paused the time because I just remembered we forgot to do something. Are the following members here, Rosemary Magania?
Yes.
Tom Lounder?
Yep.
And Robert Walker. Okay, so all group members are here.
Okay, yeah, I did forget that as well. Now you have to stay for the entire 10 minutes.
People gathered on the beaches of Oceanside, California long before cityhood in 1888. Today, we are a beach town with little beach. The melting pot of our sandy beaches now compresses people from all walks of life onto the small portion that remains. One of the best parks known to man languishes in disrepair and disappears. A huge problem for an iconic beach town that traces its history back to pre-mission times. A man-made problem requiring a man-made solution. Yet, the continued failure of government condemns us to the destruction of our beaches. Political will and funding can and will return our beaches to us, but it requires planning, grit, and funding beyond what our city has demonstrated to return the beaches of Oceanside to the people. This is Encinitas and Solana Beach following initial nourishment from an Army Corps project. The project includes re-nourishment every five to 10 years for 50 years. For budgeting purposes only, let's look at the future commitment made by those cities for sand nourishment. Budgeting for future cost share is $4 to $5 million per year, assuming no non-federal funding. That would equate to budgeting $25 to $30 annually per Oceanside resident. Long-term planning, budgeting, and political will show it can be done. Oceanside, where sandy beaches enjoyed by all are gone. The city's greatest resource is rapidly disappearing. A day at the beach is free. The cost of losing the beach is incalculable. Currently, 35,000 children under age 18 cannot use 65% of our beaches. What will you tell your children and grandchildren when the beaches are gone? We fully support the ReBeach Pilot Project, but the path to scaling the solution is longer term. Oceanside can and must do more, because we are one city with one beach. What is the plan that includes sand for our southern beaches? Let's start with nourishment now. Political will and funding will accomplish the rest. No budget means no beach. Hear us loud and clear. The people want their beach back.
Anyways, after some technical difficulties, that's our video that's currently in production. What I'd like to go on and say tonight is, in the General Plan Update survey results released in August 2024, the city remarked that quote-unquote "going to the beach, walking and biking, and dining out are among the most popular activities respondents engage in outside of their homes," while a surprisingly small percentage of respondents, less than 20%, regularly spend time in the city's parks. I would like to point out that at almost 70%, going to the beach was the number-one response, which mirrors responses to other questions where the beach was rated high. Consider now that the city recently divided its $16.5 million general fund surplus from the 2324 fiscal year between two major projects: the development of El Corazon Park Site 1 and the San Luis Rey River Flood Protection Project. I acknowledge the importance of these projects to Oceanside, but through the survey, the community clearly told you that the beach is the most valuable asset in this city, and it's what they enjoy most. I do not see this level of funding for beach restoration. Tonight, I ask you why. Over the past eight decades, our city has never been able to coordinate and manage the sustainable restoration of our beaches following the construction of the Camp Pendleton Harbor complex. It is time for us to do so, and that will require adequate funding, which I do not see reflected in the budget as presented here tonight. So with a cost savings in time, I'd turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I appreciate being able to speak for you.
Thank you. Carly Starr, followed by Pat Borsom, followed by Edward Fitzpatrick. And we do have two podiums, so if you'd like to go to the second podium and wait for the two minutes, that would be great.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I stand before you with our humble request, increase of annual contract funding for KOCT Television. I'd like to reiterate our deep appreciation for the recent approval of funds provided to our organization in the current fiscal year. To avoid our request for further emergency support, I'd like to add us to the budget workshop. So KOCT kindly requests an additional increase of support for the upcoming fiscal year of 2026 and '27 in the amount of $250,000 annually, or the sum of 1% of the franchise fees. We've been working diligently to increase our self-generated income and keeping our expenditures down. KOCT, we're raising up all our money, but it's very hard. We've raised it by, we're projected for $300,000 this year, but the PEG revenue has decreased by $200,000. Since I've been there in 2018, we used to receive $468,000 a year for our PEG, and now we receive 200, we're projected about 270 this year. So our efforts have been mighty to inform the public. We operate two channels. We do more than our city council meetings. We do, you know, monthly shows of Spectrum, High School Spectrum, Oceanside Update. We do after-school programs. We do workforce development with the local colleges, hands-on mentoring. We do graduations, technology development, sporting events. So before it becomes down to nine seconds, I just wanted to thank you again. And KOCT is here for 45 years, and we plan to inform our public with transparency.
Thank you. Edward, Pat Borsom, followed by Edward Fitzpatrick, followed by Cece Sullivan.
Thank you, our good mayor and council. I come here because I am scared of being homeless. My name is Patricia Borsom. I'm 81 years old, a widow since September of '21, living on Social Security only. I have resided in the same residence in Oceanside for 10 years. I received a three-day notice to vacate because I was unable to make my April rent. I was subletting a bedroom until 3:01 in order to make my monthly expenses because my rent was $1,760 a month. My Social Security is a little over 2K. I was informed several times by my landlord that in the spring, he would be putting the residence on the market. So far, that hasn't happened. I have applied for Section 8 in both Oceanside and North County. I have searched other senior low-income sites, including Interfaith, San Diego Rescue Mission, Elder Help, Brother Benno's, 211, APS Aging and Independent Services, Lifeline of North County. So far, nothing has helped. I have no car due to an auto accident I had in November of last year, and no means, obviously, to purchase.
Thank you, Ms. Borsom. Thank you. Edward Fitzpatrick, followed by Cece Sullivan, followed by John Tenaglia. I guess the ring doesn't work?
The alarm is still not working.
Okay.
Thank you.
Apologies, when the red light goes, that's when you're supposed to stop, but I'll let you complete your sentence, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Sanchez. Thank you, council members, for hearing me out. I am a homeless senior citizen living out of his car. Right now, I know it's difficult to get low-income housing. I know that's years in the project, but one thing we don't have that's missing that we could do something right away about is 24-hour safe parking. I have a mother that's ill in Boston in a nursing home. She may die, and I might not even be able to go to her funeral because I can't leave my car, and I can't leave it anywhere because there's no 24-hour safe parking. And that's what we need. We only have overnight safe parking, and we don't have 24-hour safe parking, which we would need if I were to leave my car and fly back and go to her funeral. So I'm asking if we can allocate some money for 24-hour safe parking instead of just the overnight safe parking. And I think the closest safe parking we have is Vista. So, and I speak on behalf of other homeless, I also speak on behalf of veterans that are homeless, that have served, and they are living out of their car as well. So I thank you, Mayor. I thank you, council members, for hearing me out, and I hope something gets done about this.
Thank you. So we have Cece Sullivan, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, city council members, and thank you, Mayor Sanchez. We would like to speak in favor of Oceanside City Council increasing beach restoration funding. Oceanside beaches are disappearing, and Oceanside has worked hard to find solutions, including establishment of ReBeach. We are middle, we are middle school competitive surfers, and there are 19 competitions at Oceanside Harbor or the pier beaches. Western Surf Association's Elastic Surf Series and Surf for the Sea. The Supergirl Surf Pro is the world's largest only-woman surf event, and it occurs at the pier every year. This is the only all-female action sports, esports, and lifestyle series in the world. The Supergirl brings in many visitors and largely contributes to the city's tourism revenue. This is a big deal to us. We are concerned about the future of surfing in Oceanside. If we continue to lose sand at our beaches, we learn a lot by being student athletes and are fortunate to live in a city that offers this opportunity. We urge you to vote in favor of establishing funding needed to keep Oceanside sand and beaches. Thank you for your time.
John Tenaglia, followed by Maisie Gordon, followed by Bob Ashton, followed by Leslie Gall.
I'm sorry, am I up? John Tenaglia?
Excuse me, John Tenaglia, followed by Maisie Gordon?
Right.
Yeah.
All set?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, council members and Mayor Sanchez. I'm here tonight to talk about money and sand. I'll get back to money in just a minute. So obviously, as we all know, there's three sand projects. The RE Beach, which of course is under design, probably will get through Coastal Commission in my opinion. Funding, no guarantee. RBSP3, I talk to Keith Grin at a regular basis, that will get designed. I'm sure they'll get through Coastal, they've done it twice before. Funding, that's going to be an issue. The one project that probably will get done, or possibly get done, is the Army Corps project because they're the feds. However, they have yet to take ownership of the erosion problems they've created with the harbor, and there's no guarantee they will do that. So where does that leave us? I think personally, as council, you should look at SCOOP and put money into a short-term nourishment plan, a long-term maintenance plan, and here's the reason why. It's a project you can control. You have to have the political will, but you can do this. Now, the question is, where do you get the money? Well, I did a deep dive last week. To my amazement, Oceanside's investment portfolio, which you probably, most of you probably know, has just over half a billion dollars under management. know, has just over half a billion dollars under management, 512 million to be exact as of January 1st. Out of that, which I also found amazing, you've got 48 million in corporate muni bonds maturing this year. Next year, you've got 102 million between U.S. Treasuries, corporate bonds, and asset-backed securities maturing. That's $150 million that you've got to redeploy between now and the end of 2026. Our ask tonight is 5 million for sand restoration, followed by 4 million per year. It's clear to me, given the liquidity of your investment portfolio, that you folks have the time, you have the money, you just have to have the political will. That's the key. Only five of you can put sand on our beach in this city. I can't do it. S O S can't do it. Nobody in this room can do it, but the five of you can. I respectfully ask that you start getting to work. And I would call the folks at Chandler Asset Management, your money manager, and say, all right, let's get to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Listen, we're going to take a lot longer, so if you could stop the plating and just wave, so we'll definitely see you, okay? But I would like to ask Pat Borsom, if you could step out and talk to our Housing and Neighborhood Services Director, Ms. Leilani Hines, so she can talk to you about your situation. Just go outside, she'll meet you there, out in the foyer. Thank you. All right, so Maisie Gordon?
Hi. Hello, city council members, and thank you, Mayor Sanchez. I'm nervous, I'm sorry. We would like to speak in favor of Oceanside City Council increasing beach restoration or funding. Basically, we are middle schools, middle school competitive surfers, and there are around 19 competitions at Oceanside Harbor or pier at the beaches. Western Surf Association, Scholastic Surf Series, and Surf for the Sea. The Supergirl Pro, Supergirl Surf Pro, the world's largest women-only surf event, occurs at the pier every year. This is the only female action sports, esports, and lifestyle series in the world. The Supergirls, the Supergirl bring in many visitors and largely contributes to the city's tourism revenue. This is a big deal to us. We are concerned about the future of surfing in Oceanside. If we continue to lose sand at our beaches, we learn, beaches, we learn a lot by being students, student athletes, and are fortunate to live in a city that offers this community We urge you to vote in favor of establishing funds needed to keep Oceanside sands and beaches. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bob Ashton, followed by Leslie Gall, followed by Allison St. John Inglis.
Good evening, city leaders, city staff, Oceanside community members. I'm Bob Ashton, President and CEO of Save Oceanside Sand. Special thanks to all the Save Oceanside Sand folks who came out to support us this evening. Thank you to the staff for the detailed work on the fiscal year 2526 budget. S O S also applauds our coastal zone administrator, Jamie Timberlake, who is hard at work, shepherding the Ree Beach Pilot Project and the Sand Ag Regional Beach Sand Project towards implementation. These two projects have the promise of restoring our beaches with over 1.9 million cubic yards of sand, as well as demonstrating the Ree Beach game-changing ability to retain sand on our shoreline. Implementation of both is the highest priority for the Oceanside community. What is most concerning is a level of funding that is currently being budgeted for beach and shoreline restoration. With these two projects totaling $81 million, with a cost share of 15%, that has a city of a cost share of $12.15 million for implementation. Current budget allocations are woefully inadequate to make this happen. In fact, looking out six years, we will still not have the money to cost share these two projects. This puts both projects in jeopardy, or being delayed, or not being implemented at all. Our beaches are in desperate need of restoration, and we cannot have either of these projects delayed. I ask you, what is the city's plan to mitigate this risk for implementation? S O S strongly recommends budgeting 5 million for this year and 4 million in annual following years. This would provide the ability to fund cost share by fiscal year 2728 of both projects. Also, expand Oceanside coastal management capacity and other opportunistic beach projects. Please increase the beach and shoreline restoration budget now and support these projects becoming a reality for restoring our beaches. We cannot delay. Our whole community deserves a beach.
Thank you. Leslie Gall, followed by Allison St. John Inglis, followed by Diane Nygaard.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, deputy mayor, and city council members. My name is Leslie Gall, and I'm the CEO of Vista Oceanside. On behalf of our Board of Directors, I want to thank you and staff for your continued support in funding two important initiatives in our S T M P. These include Oceanside shoreline preservation efforts and the Downtown Community Vision Plan that will help preserve the character of our downtown, along with providing a sense of place. Tonight, we would like to take this opportunity to express our support for continuing to make these efforts a priority for funding. As core economic drivers for our community, it is important that we continue to protect and invest in our beaches and the downtown area. It is becoming critical that we designate funding for ongoing coastal resilience strategies. Please consider allocating 5 million to this year's budget and 4 million in recurring funding for a beach restoration fund. This substantial funding is crucial for planning, permitting, and executing projects that protect our coastline from erosion while supporting tourism and the local economy. There have been three resident studies that show beach erosion is one of the top concerns for our locals. By creating a funding line item for beach nourishment, it shows your commitment to our residents and having resources available to implement beach nourishment project. In addition, the beach is the number-one visitor-demand generator for our city. These tourism revenues translate to 43 million in local and state taxes. We'd also like to see you increase the allocation of resources for Downtown Community Plan that includes city entry signage and wayfinding. It's positive to see the initial funding set aside, but we feel it's important to move forward with some of these placemaking efforts to include an entryway sign. This will create an immediate sense of local pride and can be a positive catalyst for future placemaking for the entire city. We understand that these are many needs, there are many needs, and these are tough decisions. We feel these items are imperative for Oceanside's future prosperity, impacting our cultural heritage, our social equity, and vibe, as well as environment and economic resiliency. Thank you for your consideration on these urgent matters.
Thank you. Ms. St. John Inglis, followed by Diane Nygaard, followed by Kellin Su.
Good evening, and thanks so much for taking our input here. I realize that this is a very difficult budget year to make decisions because there's so much economic uncertainty right now due to shifting federal policies, but I want to applaud the proposal to put $200,000 towards implementing the Climate Action Plan. We need to spend those funds, which are not much, very wisely. I'd also like to encourage you to keep the money budgeted for a city arborist in the final plan. Oceanside is growing rapidly, and this is the time to include planning for green spaces and shade trees. They improve quality of life, increase property values, and help mitigate climate change. Tree San Diego points out that a mature tree provides enough shade to equal the energy equivalent of hours of air conditioning. This is not fanciful, it's fact. Trees can, though, be a major headache if planted in the wrong place or in the wrong way, or are not cared for properly. So having an arborist who takes responsibility for building our urban canopy is a prudent move, and maybe we can involve the public in this effort, too. As I said last time, thanks for working to make Oceanside grow into a leafy city rather than an urban jungle. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nygaard, followed by Kellin Su, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Calavera. The budget of a city should always align with the priorities of that city. Unfortunately, we don't know if this budget is really aligned because we've not done a strategic plan for many years to actually establish what those community priorities are. Hopefully, that will be done before the next budget comes before you. We will note that the impact fees, our community charges, are too low. They haven't been adjusted for some time, and they are what assures the developers pay their fair share, and so that the residents of this community are not subsidizing development. Measure X has clearly been a huge benefit to our community. We need to make sure that the extension of Measure X also aligns with our strategic priorities and is based on meaningful community input. We note that our general plan update has included some very important new policy to support our green infrastructure, an area that's been grossly underfunded for many years. This budget doesn't reflect those. We assume that those kinds of changes will be coming back to you in the future after that general plan is adopted. But we do know two important new funding initiatives have been included in this budget. We thank staff for including them and hope that you will support them, and that includes $200,000 for implementation of our cap. It's an important step in the right direction and supporting the arborist. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Su.
Good evening. My name is Kellin Su. I'm an Oceanside resident. I would like to voice my support for increasing the scholarship fund for Parks and Rec, in addition to asking that the scholarship process and how they are allocated better reflect the value and character of Oceanside. I know staff has started on this issue, but having funds is simply not enough. Having a process that the community can be proud of and that accurately represents the values is so important. I would also like to ask that more Measure X funds be dedicated to parks and recreation and updating playgrounds. So many of our playgrounds are over 30 years old, and not just updating the equipment like M L K, which was beautiful, but doing full park renovations, including landscaping and art, and creating even a better welcoming area when we drive into the city. We have such a unique city that has so many amazing values, so using these funds that would better represent who Oceanside is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Knott, followed by Michaela Ramirez, followed by Joel West.
Currently, eight hours, the study has gone to hell. This budget has been too optimistic. We need three budgets more than ever. A liberal budget, like what we have before us, a conservative, and a catastrophic budget. The property tax is displayed, is more than doubled over a shorter period of time. That is in question. Meeting privately with council members is questionable, and reporting out in adjustments under the Brown Act may be something that needs to be done. The national tariffs impact on the city of Oceanside is in question because it isn't part of the reduction of tourism here in Oceanside. May I name Canada? Okay, future suppliers, also percentage increases, which will is unpredictable upon our supplies that we need here, that we, you know, conditional supplies for sewage and water. A consideration of special funding districts needs to be done. We need to consolidate, reduce, and look at related costs. The water and sewer in the city increases we're going to need to look at because there's also not, what's not being considered, is the Metropolitan Water District and San Diego County Water Authority. SouthO crosswalks, yes. So I could go on, but I've been given one second. Bye.
Thank you. Michaela, followed by Joel West, followed by Cynthia Cardona.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, and city council members. I'm speaking first because I'm really excited that we have Measure X again. I know that was like a big deal during voting time, so thank you for all who voted for Measure X. It really makes a difference, especially with our Oceanside youth. The reason why I'm speaking is I know many of the council members and city members here support our What's Your Superpower event, not only for the youth here in Oceanside and how it teaches them that you can have fun without doing drugs, or if you have a mental illness or something going on in your life that you're unable to share, we provide resources during that event by inviting local nonprofits that are specifically tailored for our youth here in Oceanside. Well, unfortunately, in the past couple of days, while I was doing my proposal and have been working on the proposal, my computer crashed. So those who gave me testimonies to be able to submit the proposal and that actually support the What's Your Superpower event, I brought just a little letter that says, you know, that you believe in the event that we support, because I guess this is one of the requirements for the proposal, and I would hate to miss out on this opportunity and be able to provide the youth with the great event. And also, we teamed up with Dear Tomorrow, and we're going to be able to do yearly programming with them where it's once a week. So not only does What Your Superpower happen October 3rd, but we're able to provide yearly and weekly programming for the youth. So I am going to ask for signatures for anyone who supports and city council members and stuff, so I could submit this tomorrow, because tomorrow's the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel West, followed by Cynthia Cardona, followed by Victor Mendoza.
Honorable Mayor, members of city council, I'm Joel West from Save SouthO. Save SouthO and our community appreciate the proposed 2526 capital improvement budget with capital expenditures for key SouthO priorities. Three coast highway crosswalks, the two Buccaneer Park projects, the Cassidy Street Bridge, and the La Malta Bike Trail. Also, SouthO strongly supports the city's plans to include the SouthO beaches among those served by R B S B 3, which is the only realistic hope SouthO beaches have for more sand next decade. Thus, we also support staff's plan to create the Shoreline Restoration Fund and launch it with a half million dollars from the 2526 Measure X budget. However, there was a however, I don't see how $3 million added to that fund over the next five years will cover the $10 to $15 million of local match that the city will likely need for the $55 million Ree Beach Pilot Project and the city's $26 million share of art. Therefore, I respectfully ask that the city council develop a plan in 2025 for how it can realistically pay for these two crucial beach restoration projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Cardona, followed by Victor Mendoza, followed by Guadalupe Rios.
Dear Mayor Sanchez and City Council, my name is Dr. Cynthia Cardona. I am program supervisor at Libby Lake Reach. I would like to thank the city for their continued support. Next year, we will be celebrating 30 years of serving the Oceanside community. During those 30 years, we have served countless youth. Reach fosters positive outcomes in young people through academic, social, and emotional support. Thanks to funding through Measure X, staff at Libby Lake helped maintain a 3.0 GPA. One student, when we met her two years ago, had hundreds of missing assignments. Staff helped her transfer to Surfside High School, where she now has a 3.5 GPA. At Reach, we help expand the worldview of Oceanside youth. With Measure X funding, this fiscal year, Baldorama Youth created murals that were exhibited here at City Hall. We were able to bring the kids to City Hall and see their eyes widen when they saw their own work up on the walls. Libby Lake Youth went on a field trip to the Nixon Presidential Library in Yorba Linda. None of them could tell me who Richard Nixon was, but even the most skeptical kids loved seeing his house and his grave, and they can now tell you a little bit about Richard Nixon, at least. Sometimes our youth come to us without having eaten all day. One of our youth came back to Reach after years of being away. He was on probation, trying to stay out of trouble. He eats every day primarily because we feed him. We have helped connect him with mentors through V C C's resilience program and through, also Measure X-funded, Reaching Roots. In a few weeks, he will have his last court date, and we are very proud of the work he has put in. We look forward to continuing our collaboration and partnership with the city of Oceanside for years to come.
Thank you. Victor Mendoza, followed by Guadalupe Rios, followed by, well, don't know yet.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. My name is Victor Mendoza, born and raised in the East Side, and I proudly serve as a mentor for the Libby Lake Project Reach program here in District 2. A program dedicated to serving middle school and high school youth in one of Oceanside's most underserved communities. First, I want to thank the city of Oceanside and this council for your continued support of Project Reach through Measure X funding. This investment has allowed us to build trust, consistency, and provides opportunities for the youth we serve. This year, we've consistently served on average of 30 youth every single day at our Libby Lake site with 74 youth in total. Thanks to the funding, our students are thriving, with the average GPA among youth being a 3.0. We've seen youth grow in confidence, improve academically, and take steps towards their futures. Several of our high school students are preparing to graduate, a milestone that fell out of Reach before. In the Libby Lake area, many parents work 40-plus hours a week to make ends meet. With the rising cost of living in Oceanside, access to safe and supportive after-school spaces is more important than ever. Project Reach fills that gap with mentorship, academic support, and consistency in the lives of families that face much instability. Your continued investment ensures that our youth not just have a place to go to, but a place to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Guadalupe Rios, followed by Richard Fox, followed by Josh Carson.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Guadalupe Rios, a student at San Diego Innovation High and a student at Baldurama Reach. I was told to write a letter of what Reach meant to me, but I would like to tell you what Reach is. Reach is a place where teenagers and pre-teens get the opportunity to be involved with their community and their peers, a place that opens up opportunities that not many programs offer. For example, taking you to tour college and universities, giving community service opportunities, teaching you how to create your resume and how to write cover letters, and helping you apply to jobs. I, as a student who has been enrolled with the program for four years, I would be proud to say that this program has taught me many things and has opened up many opportunities for me, like helping me apply for my first job, giving me several community service opportunities to be more involved with my community, and giving me the honor to speak for my peers and community. When I come to this program, I feel at home, like I can be weird and say the most random things without feeling judged by my peers. Although we are a small group, we enjoy each other's company and emphasize with one another. The connection my peers and I have is irreplaceable in this generation. We will argue and disagree on many things, but at the end of the day, we will show up for each other in our program. This program has taught me loyalty, maturity, and independence. So if you were to ask me, what does Reach mean to me, I would say it means to show up for one another, even if we have disagreements with each other. It means to share a connection with people your age and community, and to receive guidance when feeling lost, not to mention the staff, Mr. Carlos and Ms. Maria. These two staff have shown me a kind of mentorship I would have never imagined having, let alone the sacrifices they have made to see each of the students succeed both academic and life-wise. As a student who will be graduating two years early and have their bachelor's by '20, master's by '22, and doctorate by '25, and is also very much involved with her community, I would, I would like to say that this big plan I have for myself wouldn't be possible without the motivation, support, and guidance from Reach. So I invite you to come see our program in action and get to know some of the students who benefit from this program, to see for yourself what Reach is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Fox, followed by Josh Carson, followed by Colleen Balch.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff. I'd like to thank you all for, well, my name's Richard Fox. I'm here on my own and as the president of the South Ocean City Community of Merchants and part of the Save South-O group. I'd like to thank you all for taking time out to meet with us personally, all of you. And I'd like to just thank you for the crosswalks in South Oceanside, the lighted stop sign on Stewart and Cassidy Street, which we do need a few more of those in the school zones, but it's a good start. I'd like to thank you for the Cassidy Street Bridge work, just, I want to make sure that it stays the same design, because it's so iconic in South Oceanside, but it definitely does need some work. I'd also like to thank you for putting beach on our South Ocean, or sand on our South Oceanside beaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Carson, followed by Colleen Balch, followed by Dwayne Carter.
Hi, City Council and Mayor Sanchez, I appreciate you guys having me be able to speak here. I just wanted a little piece of the budget, just a little slice of the budget, nothing huge, but what the benefits would be for having lights at the skate park would be a lot of the kids have to be in at 10 o'clock at night, so when they leave the park, we're going to get dark. They're wandering the streets, they take the 303, go downtown, and then they're just aimlessly wandering around, you know, doing nothing, nothing good. So what would, it would just be like, give them a place where they can stay until, you know, until later on when they have to be inside, and it's a place where, you know, we watch over the youth over there. So I just wanted to present that to you guys, and I appreciate you guys having this budget meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen? Colleen Balch.
Madam Mayor and City Council, my name's Colleen Balch, and I live in South Oceanside. I'm also a member of the Save South-O Community and Merchants Association and Save South-O. I'd like to ask that the council approve the proposed expenditures for the crosswalks, projects at Buccaneer Park, LaMalta Bike Trail, Cassidy Street Bridge, and we would really appreciate some sand. I would also like to thank the staff for all their hard work and everything that they've done and listening to us and working with us on these projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dwayne Carter, followed by Jim Gray, followed by Kayina? Kayinoa, sorry.
Mayor, City Council, uh, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of all the skaters in Oceanside here who are lights at our skate parks. We have four skate parks. Vista has one, Carlsbad has two, they all have lights. We should have lights at our parks, free bullets, safety, more community engagement, and keeping revenue here in the city. When we got to go to skate Carlsbad, we spend money elsewhere. We'd like to keep the money here. There's people like me who work six days a week, 10 hours a day. When I get done, I would like to skate. I can't skate here because it's dark in the winter by 5:00. I don't want to go to Carlsbad, I'd like to stay in my city. There's a lot of people like me that are in the same situation. Not only that, it's safer for our parks to be lit so that youths who want to skate, they don't have to get their parents to drive them to Carlsbad or Vista, they can stay here in their city. It's common sense to me, more community engagement. I think it's necessary, being that we have the most skate parks in all of North County. So, um, yes, please consider.
Thank you. Jim Gray, followed by Kayinoa, followed by Aaron Everett.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jim Gray. I'm actually a resident of Costa Mesa. My parents lived in Oceanside for 40 years. I was a professional skateboarder and made several million skateboards in a factory of my own in Costa Mesa. I helped facilitate the publishing of the Public Skate Park Development Guide, so I've been very involved in skateboarding for over 50 years. I designed our skate park in Costa Mesa, and I just want to tell you that lights are critical to a skate park. I'm sure your recreation people have noticed since they opened it that they have all sorts of ages, from five-years-old to 70-year-olds riding your skate park. Guys like me still get out there and ride our skate park every day. A lot of guys work till 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock when they need a place to go skate at night, and if there are no lights, like I said, they'll go elsewhere, or, or they'll skate in the dark, and it'll be more dangerous, so I just, I'm just here to show support and tell you that the lights of your skate park are a real imperative thing, and I think you'll find it to be a good, good expenditure, and it'll enhance the use of your skate park already being very, very helpful. So just thank you for your consideration and appreciate being here.
Thank you. Kayinoa, followed by Aaron Everett. Aaron Everett? Do you have anyone else that's on the, oh, that's it? That's not 28.
When we called the public comment, we shut off anyone's ability to register to speak.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Yeah, so.
Okay, well, go, go ahead and hear you. State your name. This is a workshop. State your name clearly, and you speak for up to two minutes.
She already went.
Michaela, you already spoke.
Oh, are we only allowed?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Say your first and last name.
So that's three people?
Two, three, four.
Four, okay, go ahead. Because I had, I thought we had 28, and I only, I'm up to 20.
Some were, some didn't show up.
25 would have been Aaron, so Kayinoa is out, and as is Aaron, and so go to you, sir, in the blue shirt.
I signed up.
No, what is your name?
Matt Caulfield.
Okay, you have up to two minutes, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. I concur with the proposal to set aside funds on a recurring basis for beach restoration. ReBeach, for which the city deserves a great deal of credit, extends no further south than Wisconsin. It is a pilot project that, if scalable, will not occur until 2035. If nothing else is done until then, and South-O shoreline continues to degrade at its current rate, there may, there may be no beach foundation left to scale. And by the way, a deteriorating southern shoreline could have an imical effect on the construction of ReBeach itself. It behooves us, therefore, not to focus solely on ReBeach and ignore the adjacent shoreline. The last replenishment south of Wisconsin occurred 13 years ago. Since then, nothing. As a result, all the beaches and access points south of Wisconsin have been closed for several years. We need to recognize the importance of the South-O shoreline from an equity point of view, as well as a potential impediment to the success of ReBeach. We need to be prepared financially and otherwise to fund ReBeach, RBSP-3, SCOOP, and seize other unforeseen nourishment opportunities. In this regard, I would like to publicly express my appreciation to City Manager Borrego and Coaster Minister Timberlake for modifying a recent proposal to ensure South-O's beaches are covered in RBSP-3. By the way, I personally appreciate Deputy Mayor Joyce and Councilmember Figueroa's response to my letter on that issue, including Eastus' tedy call by Councilman Figueroa. I appreciate it very much, it's a shame he's not here. Thank him, okay?
Thank you. You, sir, you're next. Please state your name, and then you have two minutes.
Hello, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jose Cruz. I am a former Oceanside city lifeguard and Parks and Rec staff. I'm here to out-of-gate for the programs known as For Kids' Sake and Reach, which I will refer to as the program. The program is an after-school program and summer camp for Oceanside youth in Baldurama and Mel Bishop Rec Center. These programs provide low-cost childcare to our residents. For the children in these programs, they're provided with daily meals, enrichment activities, and a safe place to do their homework. In addition, we provide experiences that may not have, they may not have had otherwise, such as learning to fish with Oceanside anglers, field trips to Knott's Berry Farm and Oceans, and Legoland. In addition to their services, they also deter youth from joining gangs. A United Nations study concluded that the greatest return on investment of all social programs is investment in our children. Every dollar invested, returning $5 in future economic growth. Please help us continue to serve our children for kids' sake. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Demir, and I'm a skate mom. I have two little boys, they're eight and 10-years-old, they're not here for obvious little boy reasons, but I wanted to echo what Josh and Dwayne had said. So when it gets dark here in the wintertime between 4:30 and 5:00 p.m., I have the privilege to cart my kids over to Algonorte, deep into Carlsbad. One thing I'm noticing is, is I'm buying gas in Carlsbad, I'm eating at restaurants in Carlsbad, and patronizing places in Carlsbad, because there's no lights at Prince, I got to go to Algonorte. That's kind of the next closest thing for us. I'd like to spend my money here in Oceanside, so that's the first one. Secondly, what about kids who are drop-off age, teenagers? They're too big for playgrounds, they're too rowdy to be around town. A lot of them have schoolwork, they have part-time jobs. To Dwayne's point, I've seen, I've seen grown men kick off their work boots, throw a pair of skate shoes on, and just burn off steam from the day at the skate park. In short, expanding the time that we have by just a little bit, even if in the wintertime with the timer to give us a little extra time in our day would be great. This isn't just for the kids, it's for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess you're our last speaker. Your name?
Hi, I'm Leigh Anne Garmes. I'm vice president of the Board of Directors of Oceanside Theater Company. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me today. And Mayor, I'd like to say thank you for attending our recent First Reads rehearsal of Latin History for Morons, which is our next production, opening May 28th. I would like to invite everyone here. We're very excited about it, and I am here on behalf of the Board of Directors of OTC and the thousands of patrons who come through our doors and the youth out in the schools that we serve every year, and thank you for your continued support of the arts, specifically of Oceanside Theater Company. We are the stewards of the cultural gem that is the Sunshine Brooks Theater. Our partnership since 2011 to operate and maintain the building as a performing and visual arts center continues to grow and benefit the citizens and visitors of Oceanside and improve the quality of life where we live. We'd like to thank you for the Measure X funding last year, which helped us provide youth theater programs for gang diversion and youth engagement, and we hope that that will continue for the next year. That's one reason Alex is not here, working on that, among other things. You received, you all received a letter from Managing Director Alex Goodman for funding for this year's budget to help offset our rising operational costs and support and invest in the Brooks renovation project, which will bring critical infrastructure improvement to the historic building. It will allow us to serve the diverse community for decades to come. We have previously shared with you the details of our renovation project, and I want to let you know that we are shovel-ready. We have the architectural plans and the city permits to begin the project, and as you know, the permits have a time limit, so we are asking for your support.
Thank you. I, I didn't see an amount.
I'm sorry?
An amount?
Oh, $500,000 for the campaign and the 16.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I didn't, I don't recall hearing any questions in the comments from staff, I mean, comments from the public, so I'll just go ahead, come back, unless, does staff have any comments to last final comments before the council starts deliberating here?
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, first up is Deputy Mayor Joyce.
I just want to say thank you first to staff. A lot of work obviously goes into this every year, and given the shaky situations, just generally with the change of administrations, I really appreciate everybody's work on this. The general fund, the climate action, set-asides, the city arborist, as, those are extremely welcome investments from the city that will pay off in the long term. And the Measure X budget, I really appreciate the homelessness solutions and resources that are being dedicated to taking over some of the work that needed to be done in that space from a city side. I also really appreciate and understand how big a deal the Shoreline Restoration Fund ongoing is in that space as well. I know that we are looking at, as many of our speakers tonight talked about, three different major, major hall programs that the city couldn't get one of them across the line essentially in the past, and we're going to try and get all three done within the next handful of years, so that's a major undertaking, and I really appreciate staff's work on that. I also appreciate the emergency response investments, I think that's a really big deal, and the scholarship fund improvements that I know our Parks and Rec Commission's been talking about for a long time. I also want to say thank you to Harbor, who's been working with our H-back, and the rest of the folks who are really invested in the harbor and, and looking at getting the vital harbor improvements over the long term in place, and there's a plan for them, that's a really big deal. I don't want that to go unsaid. There are a couple of things that I am going to be asking for my colleagues up here to consider. consider, and so I'll just go one at a time. The first one is that I really want to bring our attention to some of the first remarks that were, that happened tonight about the most devastating impacts of, of folks not being able to find housing or being on the verge of losing housing. I would ask, I know that we're doing some work in our Housing Department on structurally if we need to change the setup, but I would ask that we consider setting aside money for at least a couple of positions, one in homelessness or one in affordable housing management, given that we have all of these new affordable units coming online, and it's a really big ask to be looking at them. So if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna invest in adding new staff members in the Housing Department, I think we should really be thinking about what that looks like in the coming months. I think we should be ready to add those imminently. The second one would be to look at possibly doing a mid-year budget review. We had a pretty large surplus last year. And I know that's kind of like a celebration at the end of the year, that we had a big amount of money at the end of the year to, and cushion, and that's all great. But that means that that money didn't get spent on services to our citizens last year, too. And so to some, the point, there's some degree of falloff when you have so much money left over that you're leaving out the work that needs to be done. And as everybody that works in the city knows, there is no shortage of things that need to get done. So I, I hope that we can come back at a mid-year budget review and really look closely at, at adding positions to support our different departments in need. So then the specific ask I have for you all is the lighting at Prince Park, and this was brought up by several community members. Skateboarding is not just a hobby for kids. It's a legit recreational, creative outlet for thousands of Oceanside residents and North County residents. Like, we're not just going to be keeping our folks here, we're going to be taking Carlsbad and Vista skaters to Oceanside if we put lights at Prince. Everybody wants to skate there. I think Tony Huck was there the other day. You know, in basketball, we, we have open gym at night, right? And that's, that's for folks that recreate doing basketball. For tennis, we have lights at the courts. For soccer, we have an awesome new foatsault court, which is really great. It has some lights. Volleyball, we have open gym. This is what skating looks like after dark. And we need to give our folks who value that as their outlet somewhere to be. So I would ask now if we have three supports for that. I think it's an appropriate time. So I'll pause to see if we have anybody else that supports.
Councilmember Figueroa?
I, I support affordable housing management and lights at Prince Park. I, I kind of get the chance to speak as well now, too, but I just, or are we only?
Let me just, let me just pause you there. Pause him. And are you finished with your comments, Deputy Mayor?
I have some other things I had, but I was going to pause, and I don't mind splitting it up.
I think, I think you should just go ahead and make your comments.
So before we go to the next one, we're gonna have, like, everybody's gonna take a chance to look at the things and do checkboxes or something, so that we know that they have three support.
I'm sure, what, okay. Why don't you finish your comments? And then we have Councilmember Figueroa, and then we have Councilmember Robinson wishing to speak.
Okay. So I'll briefly go through the other ones, then, just in case we actually need to go back and forth. So the Prince Park lighting project, there's also been requests from our school campuses to have soccer goals at their school campuses. These because we now have an MOU with the different school sites, that those school sites stay open. So right now, we have these beautiful grass fields with no soccer balls, with no soccer goals on them. And we, for a very low amount of money, I think it's 10,000 per school site, we could put soccer goals on them. And I know we would have people playing pickup soccer games on the weekends, on the evenings.
I think it's nets, soccer nets.
It's a, it's something that we don't actually have, again, anywhere else in the city where you can just go play pickup soccer, other than the awesome foatsault court, of course, at Libby. And then, so that's another one. It's a, it's a low bar, but it's also a high payoff that we, I know we'd have people, and I know Mission Elementary, McAuliffe, and Libby would recreate sites, and they're spread out across the city, so we'd be covering a lot of the city with that request. The other one would be junior guard programs. I would really like to, and I spoke to some staff about this, and I think there's a viable way to do it. I would really like to set up a structure so that our kids that are utilizing our Resource Center programs, like Reach, have a chance to be prepared for junior guards, and then have a direct into junior guard programs, because a junior guard program fills up so incredibly fast. Saving those spots for our students that are in those programs, and giving them a direct pathway into that, also provides them a pathway into going into the fire service afterwards, which a lot of our, our firefighters came out of the guard program itself. So I would really support that. A big one is, I heard staff, and I am really happy that staff brought forward bringing, adding on a new fire battalion chief. From what I understand of the project, of the program that FIRE is requesting, to really do the program, you need to have three fire battalion chiefs. And I think the plan as presented is to slowly add them one year after another. My proposal would be to not slowly add them, but to add them all in the first year, to fund two of them through Measure X in the first year, and one through General Fund. And then the second year, you take one off of Measure X, and then you have two in the General Fund. And then the third year, they're all in General Fund. That way, we're ramping up the funding source of them. We're not sustaining it all through Measure X, and we're also achieving the program outcomes that we want through adding that battalion chief. I also heard about the construction of the Oceanside sign, the Welcome to Oceanside sign, and I am fully supportive of finding funds to get that construction going as soon as possible, because it's about to be Olympics time in Oceanside, and it would be great to have that thing up and going. My small plug is to make sure the font doesn't look like every other city, because we are, we are unique. So at least, let's get the font right. I also would like staff to meet with KOCT and Sunshine to figure out how we can sustain these very public-serving programs. I don't have a, I don't have a direct push on that. I'd like to hear from my colleagues on those, but I, I know that they are keepers of our history and pathways for young people to get into media and the arts, and they are vital, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Figueroa?
I don't lose my train of thought. I'll start with the KOCT and the Sunshine Oceanside Theater Company, Brooks Theater. I think, similar, I would like to have staff schedule meetings with both of them to see how we can support those programs, but also take a look at their budget and see how we can figure out a way to just help sustainability of those programs. I want to thank city staff for the, for several things. I think this is an amazing report. Thank you for all the work, and thank you for meeting with all of us and prepping us for today's meeting. Starting with the feasibility studies for the crosswalks in South Oak on Coast Highway at Whaley, the dip in front of Loma Alta Creek and the Audubon Society. Thank you for listening to, meeting with residents, and really taking that into consideration and moving forward with those studies. The Facility Needs Assessment Study for Sepovita Park in Tri-City, and the Facility Needs Assessment Study also for Fireside Park in the Mid Valley. I think both of those parks are in underserved neighborhoods. Both of those parks are really utilized by the, by the surrounding communities, but I think those are two parks that don't get a lot of attention that some of our other more popular parks do. And so having a Facility Needs Assessment for Sepovita Park and Fireside, I think, is huge. The John Landis Lighting for installation of lights near the existing parking lot and adjacent to the grass fields, that's been a huge ask from the community for a long time, and a huge need. It gets really dark there at night, and you still have kids playing. It's almost impossible to throw a football during the fall and winters around 5:30 p.m. The pedestrian lighting for Crown Heights, I think that is awesome as well. I know the neighborhood has been asking for lighting there, so that, I'm really happy to see that. As well as the Cassidy Street Bridge overcrossing replacement, I was really happy to see that on there as well. I do have some questions, but I'll hold if I have time on those. When it comes to the Measure X youth programming, and I don't know if this falls under the gang prevention budget, but one of the things that I want to ask for is support for our Reach and Club Crown Heights funding via the Measure X and General Fund, not decreased funding, and highly consider increasing Measure X funding to supplement the decrease that these programs, the decreased funding that these programs are going to receive due to the decrease in CDBG funding, so that these programs' overall budget stays consistent to the 24, 25 budget. These programs have a long history of success and service to the youth, and to the entire families in that community. They do so much. They're more than just a building, they're more than just an after-school program. They really are a hub of resources and hope for those communities. And they also have a history of hiring a lot of the former students. A lot of the, the staff that go through these Reach and Club Crown Heights program are students that went through the program. I know that is the case for Baldurama Reach. And I did talk to Club Crown Heights today. They couldn't be here because they have the Dia de Nino event going on today, and that's why they weren't here today. Just want to highlight some needs, just to put some stats out there on why I'm asking for this. Only 15% of youth in our target neighborhoods in Libby Lake, Mesa Margarita, Landis, Tri-City, Back Gate, Eastside, and Crown Heights receive structured after-school programming. Oceanside has a 30% higher juvenile crime rate than like cities. There is a 47% graduation rate in our target neighborhoods. 85% of families lack access to affordable after-school programs. And some of these stats are replicated within our school district. But with that being said, we do have programming at Libby Lake, John Landis, and Crown Heights. I would ask for this council to support using Measure X fundings to launch an after-school program like Reach and Club Crown Heights in the John Landis community. Since I've came on council, and prior to coming on council, I've heard from many residents, parents regarding the gang activity at that park. We historically have always had a gang presence in that park, but over the past two decades, since we closed the Resource Center down in 2008 due to the recession, we now have three documented gangs in that neighborhood, and two or three other groups that have been forming over the years. We have funding set aside for vandalism in our parks. That park gets a lot of vandalism, not just at the park, but throughout the neighborhood. And one way that we can decrease and curve this activity, I believe, is by bringing a program like Reach to the John Landis community. And I would ask this council to support a comparable budget to the Libby Lake Reach, Club Crown Heights, and Baldurama Reach to launch a program at John Landis neighborhood. And I do have questions, since I have four minutes. For staff, I have several questions. There was one, the Calavera Creek Crossing Project. Can anyone share what that entails?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, our city engineer, do you want to take that one, Brian? The describing the Calavera Creek Crossing Project?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, Councilmember Figueroa, the Calavera Creek Project started off as a bridge to, literally, bridge the creek out there for BMX and pedestrian walking. The deeper we got into it, the more we found cultural resources were in the area. So the project has blown much larger, grown much larger than we initially anticipated when we first looked at this project. So we're still working with the local Native Americans to figure out what cultural resources they have and how to best approach it. One of the things that they're looking at is completely rehabilitating and replanting the entire area, which requires a significant amount of environmental paperwork to go through. So it's kind of been put on hold while we try to get our heads wrapped around what needs to be done at this point. But it is something that we are actively pursuing. It's just a Herculean task at this point.
Understood. And where would it be located specifically?
That's part of the problem. Initially, we were going to have it crossing near one of the flood control channels, but because of the, the locations that have been identified by the, the local tribes, every place that we looked, it just creates a larger ball of wax, basically, to look at. I mean, there's no other better way to say it. It's just every time we look at a place and we think we have a good place to, to make a crossing, we can't put it there because we run into this impediment, and we can't put it there because we run into that impediment. So we also have to look at it holistically of how do we include parking to allow for the additional people? So it's, it's a very, very large project that has just taken on a life of its own.
But exciting for that area of Oceanside, so I'm happy to hear about that. We did have comments from folks regarding the sand. There was some comments, I believe, that one of them is utilizing assets from our portfolio for sand replenishment, and also how we plan to fund the cost share of ReBeach and RBSP-III. Do we have any answers to those questions from staff?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Our investment portfolio represents the pooled cash citywide. So it represents all cash that's sitting in our sewer fund, our water fund, harbor, fleet. Only a, you know, a portion of that is the General Fund, and that's also the funding for what's already budgeted in the General Fund. So if we were to look at available cash, we wouldn't look at the value of the investment portfolio. We would have to look at our General Fund reserves.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
And if I could, Councilmember Figueroa, just kind of add to that with respect to the issue of sand and sand funding. I would say that our answer right now is we are actively pursuing several grants to fund both portions of, well, of course, the RBSP-III, the Regional Beach Sand Program. A portion of that, Sandegg is actually seeking grant funding for that project. If they are successful in receiving that grant funding, our fair share contribution of that would be $3.9 million for that project. With respect to the ReBeach sand effort, we are actually seeking a large $25 million grant from the state. We're actively pursuing that money as well. If that were to come to fruition, then our fair share of that project would be, for the sand component of ReBeach, would be about $3.7 million. You know, I understand that there is some question about whether the city will be successful in receiving those grant funds. I do think that, you know, if for some reason we are unsuccessful, then it'll definitely cause us to kind of rethink the way that we're approaching this, and at that point, would likely come back to you, seeking some other funding mechanism if we are unsuccessful in those grants. We'll also say that, you know, with respect to, if, if we happen to run into a situation with the SCOOP project, for example, that comes available to us and that we are able to participate in, then, you know, at that point, there's a strong likelihood we would be either leaning on the monies that we have already set aside for sand replenishment, we do have money sitting in accounts, or if, you know, it was a really good opportunity for us, it'd probably even cut back to you and seek to use a portion of our reserves for that. Thank you. I think my time's up.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, and I hope at the next workshop somehow we can work around this clock thing, because it's maddening, because obviously, we're all trying to rush to get in this 10-minute thing. So anyways. Deputy Mayor Joyce, I think you're that same kid that used to copy off my paper in school, because a lot of the things that you talked about, I had mentioned. So let me, let me just support a couple of things that you did talk about. In the Housing Department request personnel, the one question I, and this is more of a question for staff, I guess. It, it seems like mobile home issues come up all the time and really put some pressure on our housing staff to, to deal with. Will any of the hiring that we do, or anybody we bring in, have, have more expertise or be, I don't know who you want to answer that, sir, but I'm, I'm just concerned that we don't have the ongoing expertise on mobile home issues.
Yes. So we do, we do actually have, we do have some staff dedicated to mobile home park stuff. That actually was a position that we hired a couple of years ago, Jesus, who kind of handles some of that stuff. Clearly, there is a need for additional staff in that area. As councils aware, we are currently undergoing a organizational assessment of the Housing and Neighborhood Services Department. We actually had a check-in with the consultant today. That project is actually progressing quite nicely. From that study, we do expect there are going to be some recommendations with regards to staffing and a potential reorganization of that department. That study should be wrapping up in about four months.
Yeah, thanks. And I, I'm gonna, just because of the clock. Yeah, thanks. And I, I'm going to, just because of the clock.
Yes, sorry. I know you're on a timer.
So I appreciate it. Got it. And thanks. I knew that, and I just wanted to make sure that we were focused on that as well. On your, if you're looking for a third supporter for lighting at Prince Park, I would say yes. I think based on what we've heard, based on, I would really like, I think it would be very wise of us to look at some sort of solar lighting project or something that we can incorporate in at that skate park. And for all future parks, if we design new ones, that they incorporate lighting automatically, that that's just part of the plan. Of course, anything to their junior guard program, anything that would benefit that and help that, I would definitely, if our lifeguards, the folks that oversee that program, can work in a way to really benefit our local youth to get them more and more in to the program, I would support too. I appreciate, really do appreciate the fire battalion chief comments you made. It was on my list to talk about, but I'm glad that you had thought through a plan. But I would, if not specifically your plan, I would just ask staff and support it that they go back, work with the fire chief, work with the city manager staff to see how we can put this program into play at one time. If there's any way of doing it at all to get it done, because it will make a difference. And I know we've had discussions about it in meetings about can one work and do, look, anything can work that we have, but if we can make it whole and make it happen, I think that's what we should do. So thank you for your comments on that, and I appreciate it. And I'm glad you mentioned about signage in the Olympics, and Ms. Gall came up and spoke, and I've talked to her before, but I know there's no venue for Olympics in '28 here in Oceanside, but there is one just down the road a bit in San Diego County, the surfing venue. I would really appreciate if staff, and I've thought many ways how to do this, but it may be most appropriate to Mr. Bregoe, if you could maybe put together some sort of staff-centric task force to look at how the city can prepare for 2028 and incorporate all those things we talked about, the signage, the wayfinding, the TOT, you know, staying, increasing our TOT stays by encouraging people to stay here for their Olympic stay. Just, there's a lot of things, and we have time to do it. And so I would appreciate if that's something you'd be willing to take on. KOCT, and I'll just second Councilmember Figueroa's comments about KOCT and the Theater Company. Staff can look at that and see what they can do to keep these two very important agencies moving forward and growing and working here in Oceanside. And I would say to them, especially to KOCT probably, please develop, if we're able to help you and keep you going, then come back with us and tell us how specifically, what services you can provide, what additional added value services that the KOCT can provide to the city for the funding that we would be providing. Okay, let me get to a couple of quick questions. Parks and Rec, there was something I got in the summary here, talks about 149,000 for special events and that we do, and they're cultural, they identify them as cultural legacy events, I guess, is how you reference it. I don't know if there's a staff member that can answer this here, but that, each of those events is a different amount of money that we have to put in for services, right? And they're different, they're not all the same. It's not like you take those and divide them up and say it's all the same. Is that correct?
Councilmember Robinson, Manuel Gonzalez, Director of Parks and Recreation, that's correct. Each of these events has different costs. This amount that is being proposed is to offset some of the additional costs associated with public safety and elements that some of these nonprofits are having a difficult time funding.
Yeah. I'm just, I don't know. I just wonder if there should be some sort of, and it's not big money, I get it, but some sort of sad amount that we dedicate to these various groups, because they're not truly city activities, are they?
So there is currently a council policy that gives us the authority to waive up to $5,000 per event. That is unfunded, so part of this would help to provide funding for that. In addition to police and fire services, this would fund traffic, traffic control management, which all goes to play to the safety of the events. But these are, some of these events have close knit ties with city services, and we collaborate on them.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not going to argue over that little bit of money. It just seems like, in the scheme of things, it's a lot of city money to throw at projects that I don't really understand what these other groups can or cannot pay for, but that's On Measure X, real quick on that, I got less than two minutes left, but on Measure X, there was a comment about the one-time funding, and I can't find my page fast enough. So it was one-time funding, I think for the hand crew. Was that correct?
Yes, correct. $300,000, one time.
And then there was another project right after that you talked about. Was it, I can't find the page. Anyways, just, you know, when we have this one-time funding, one year, that we believe, can we look at maybe how that same, that same dollar amount might go towards sand projects or what, you know, like you said, I think that was the next thing you talked about. That was my note, oh, can we apply additional money towards sand projects through Measure X? If we got one-time money this year, it's obviously going to be there next year, that same dollar amount. I just encourage to look at, I know that's a little vague, but look at how we can plan ahead to add more funds through our Measure X for projects to grow our contribution.
I want to be sensitive to your time, but we, the beauty of Measure X and how it differs from other plans is we do plan ahead for the full seven, essentially 17 years of it. So any of that money that is one-time that doesn't get spent next year is sort of already planned for in future years.
So you're telling me, don't worry about it, you got it?
I would never say that, but, or I would say that.
But I appreciate it. Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Weiss?
And I'll be brief. I want to address the sand issue just for a moment. I think this council has made sand a priority. And I get that people want more money, but I will respectively disagree with John Tenali, who said the five of us up here are the only ones that can put sand on the beach. Actually, it's not true. There's only one person up here that can bring a project forward to put sand on the beach with recommended funding, and that's the city manager and staff. We get to vote on it, but I just want to clarify for John and the others out there, if they think that we're the ones that can sit up here and, you know, the five of us get together in the back room somewhere and start talking about which is the great and effective sand project, we can't even talk to each other other than more than one person. So I just want to make sure you understand, the council has made sand a priority. Now it's up to staff to bring projects forward that will hopefully get sand on the beach and then find out a way to keep it on the beach. Other than that, I just want to make sure that, and I know it's in Measure X, but I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that we had scheduled, and I think they're going to be rescheduled, our briefings to look at a new police headquarters, which I think is a priority for us. Don't want to lose it amongst all the other ones that are out there. And then I would ask the city manager, and I'm going to pick a date, and it's no later than May 21st, that we can get a memo outlining the projects that both Deputy Mayor Joyce and Councilmember Figueroa had mentioned. So lighting at Prince Park, soccer goals, junior guard program, the BCS that Councilmember Robinson mentioned, the Oceanside sign, and I'll also echo the issue with KOCT and the Theater Company, and also the after-school program. Just a brief description of what could be done and how much money you think it's going to take. So for the lights, for example, if it's easy enough to just go buy them and put them in versus having to do a design, because I know that we've had a guardrail project in the CIP for two and a half years now because they have to get it designed first. So we have an idea that when it comes to the budget adoption, so we're not sitting up here arguing back and forth and trying to pick. If you can get it to us like a week in advance or so, then we can at least have an idea that, okay, is it really, is it going to impact anything, or is it not? Do we have the capacity for it or not? So.
We would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would like to thank staff so much for meeting with everyone of the council members. And this is basically kind of a new council, and yet we prioritize the projects that we need to ensure continue. For example, the thing that we didn't talk about was the concrete part of the pier that is extremely critical and a very high priority because it is nearing 100 years old, and we do not ever want to be in a position of closing the pier for access because it becomes somehow dangerous. So I really want to ensure that we continue on the priorities that we have. I know the flood control project, I had, really, truly, it was like an honor to be included in a really staff kind of level of a presentation on where we are on the flood control project. I understand the Army Corps asked that I be there, and it really was amazing to hear really how critical this is in terms of the stage, of the stage that we are at now, with staff meeting twice a week, sometimes even more, over this project, and not even knowing that we have, or being, because I don't remember, that we have a mitigation project, for example, that needs to be done prior to being able to get the permits from the state, which is another $1 million-plus investment by the city of Oceanside, which needs to happen soon. I mean, there's all of these other things, wheels that are turning in the background, and so these kind of wish lists, things that we want to do to, you know, to provide a higher level of service, is in fact something that, you know, it's basically a balancing act. In addition to all of that, I am very concerned about what's going to happen with federal dollars coming in, because I know that our housing department almost, almost completely relies on federal funding. And we're already starting to hear that they are not going to be funding things like additional Section 8, not going to be funding or looking at HUD and saying we want HUD to cut it in half, which at the grassroots level, at our level here, means potentially looking at general fund money to make some of that difference. So it's difficult. I think what staff has brought forward is something that I fully support. I did ask all along, knowing that we were going to have less funding for like CDBG, can we continue our after-school programs? Those are, those are very, very critical. And of course, for John Landis, because that is something that I have been wanting, you know, to continue to move forward on that, on that park. I do wonder to what extent we have Vista students coming, and if there's maybe conversation we can have with the city of Vista to maybe have, you know, some joint programming. I don't know if that's anything that we do anywhere else, but certainly we are starting to work with Vista on, say, the roads projects. So that is something that we could possibly also include in that. I didn't, I did receive the letter from the school district about soccer netting, but I didn't know, because they said it would benefit both the students, you know, and also after-school. I didn't know, I didn't get the sense that if this is a shared and how much that was going to cost. So I kind of assumed that it was because they mentioned in the letter that it was for the students as well. So this is during school time. So maybe there can be some kind of a joint project there. And really, that's, those are my comments. I really appreciate all of us. Sand is a high priority, believe me. I tried talking about sand in the, in the 2000s, and nobody was listening, and everyone is listening now. And we do have some, two very, very good projects moving forward, that is the ReBeach as well as the regional sand replenishment project, three through Sandegg. And I am very, very hopeful that that is going to get funded and get sand on our beaches. We are asking for a lot more sand than we did before for that project. But again, I want to thank staff very much for that. I don't know if we need a formal motion at this point, because it sounds like staff is listening to what the comments were from each council member. I do want to make sure that we are going to be able to respond to whatever cuts we get from the feds. I'm meeting with the new regional director for HUD in Los Angeles. I believe they're doing outreach to all mayors of large, larger cities, and we happen to be on that list. So we'll be, I'll be finding out possibly that later in the month of May, what we're looking at, and it may be something that we'll need to maybe move things around, should that happen. Deputy Mayor, did you want to make some other comments?
I apologize.
Because you're out of time.
I have two minutes left.
Oh, sorry.
I've been just talking real fast tonight. I apologize. This is just one that I made promises to bring up, and so I wanted to make sure I fulfilled that. Two years ago, we started work on a dog park at Ron Ortega, near adjacent to Ron Ortega Baseball Fields and Park. And that spurred a conversation with the Little League Association there and the frankly really challenging conditions they have in their, in their parks, fields. That includes storage spaces that they can't use, the junior sale bleachers that are falling apart, they were purchased many, many years ago, and other improvements to that park that are absolutely necessary. And they felt very strongly that we shouldn't be investing a whole bunch of money into like making a flat space for dogs while we have kids playing on fields that shouldn't be used, and parents don't have spaces to do concessions properly. So I wanted to make sure that we brought that back up, because last year we put aside funds to plan that area, and I know staff is extremely booked up, and they're doing their best, but we really haven't gotten far down that project pathway. And I would like to see what, since I know we typically do a study and figure out exactly what to do, and then we come back with a big project, I think we owe them the opportunity to get those, those projects moving as quickly as possible. So if we have some phases of getting the upgrades to those fields that we can put in place in this next year, I would like staff to also include that in the thing that comes back in May.
What is the status? Do you have a status? Because I know that those are the things that staff has been working on.
Yeah, so just to kind of reiterate what Deputy Mayor Joyce just mentioned, last year you did budget $185,000 towards a study for Ron Ortega. It has been slow to roll out, I will say that. We are actively meeting right now with the Little League Board to ask them to prioritize the improvements that they would like to see out there. And I agree that once those improvements are identified, working with the board, we should really get working on immediately, starting them instead of doing any further study. I think we owe that to them, given how long it's taken to roll out the first phase of this program here. So again, we are actively working with the board. We have had, we have made some improvements out there. We did actually do quite a bit of field work out there. There were a lot of ruts in the infield, and our public work staff did go out there. And it was a lot of work, it needed a lot of work, but certainly there's a lot more work to be done, and we'd like to partner with the Little League to identify those priorities and get moving on them. And if we need to come back to council asking for additional monies, we'll certainly do that.
Thank you. One other project that I was very much interested in is the Reeds Project, which apparently is looking at further cuts. Gets, it's mostly funded by, I believe, state funds, and I just want to make sure that it continues to be fully funded as well. So I saw the $35,000. I don't know if that is the amount that they're asking for, but... I don't know if that is the amount that they're asking for, but.
Yeah, I can provide a little clarification. So there, the Reeds Program is, some of the funding is at risk right now.
Yeah.
It, there have been no formal announcements to cut off funding. If in fact, we do get to that point and those cuts are formal, then we will actually come back and probably seek to allocate some additional money to keep that program running.
Great. Thank you. So with that, I believe staff has direction?
Yes, we do have direction. We thank council. I think we have really good direction here. We'll prepare the memo and present it by the deadline requested by Councilmember Weiss and look forward to bringing back the full budget to you on June 4th.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right. So next item is comments on non-agendized items. And we had seven people, five people.
Five people.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
All right. Our first.
And by the way, before we do move on, do we have plans for updating the equipment here in the, in the council chambers because the speakers are not working? I get so many complaints about the speakers. We really, I, I think that we've been using the same system here for all 25 years that I've been on the council. And is that, are the upgrades happening?
Yes, we, yeah, we are actually working on a number of, of upgrades, not only to the sound system, but to the above.
The lights.
The lighting and then also the voting equipment as well. So that's all in the works.
Fantastic. Thank you. So items not on the agenda, Jim Gray, followed by Josh Carson, followed by Michaela Ramirez.
So we didn't have a judge.
Okay.
So it's all the skaters, so we're good.
Okay, so Dwayne.
So no Jim Gray?
So all of you, all of the, you signed up twice then?
I just, yeah.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have, Josh Carson, Michaela Ramirez, Dwayne Carter and Jimmy Naught. Oh, Jimmy, did you want to speak?
Yes, both of you can speak.
He's a skater.
LeAnn?
Right.
Did you want to speak? Oh, okay, I'll pull you up.
Okay, so we have, so Michaela's off, right? Dwayne Carter is off.
Okay.
Right? Jimmy is not. LeAnn Garmes, are you off as well?
No, she, she just informed me to.
Okay. So just Jimmy Naught. All right, down to one.
I'll make this a little brief. This is following in what is good for the goose, is good for the gander. Since you cut the time for the public, I agree, you cut the time for yourself a little bit. I would like to congratulate the mayor for approaching, I guess it is, a quarter of a century, being on the council. Plus also tomorrow is her birthday, well, excuse me, her annual circumventing around the sun. So happy circumventing around the sun.
Thank you very much, Mr. Naught. All right. This meeting is adjourned to next, to May 7th.
Is that another one?
I meet every week.
Thank you.[1727.46]